Show, so we have probably two or three vendors in there and I would have some guided meditation in the back area just to kind of get some of the revenue going.
And hours at the moment are gonna vary?
They're gonna vary, yeah. I have, um, the earliest on two days a week would be 5:30 in the morning for one class for people who are early risers. And then on weekends it would be like, it would probably be 7:00 AM and then by noon or 1 o'clock, I'd say it's like a good part.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the application for business registration.
Before we do that, can I say, I understand trustee Jones, you're not gonna participate, he's abstaining because he is the owner of the property.
Okay.
I will motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by trustee Maravka, second by trustee Parker.
Maravka?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
Jones?
He can't abstain.
Abstain.
And a hail.
Yes. All right, thank you, good luck.
Thank you very much, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
You guys are gonna be good.
Yes, good. So, um, something I want the trustees to think about, Amy kinda put the bug in my ear that, um, you know, it's a wonderful problem to have, but you know, we're starting to get some more businesses downtown and, um, some of these applications, you know, ask about parking and so, you know, some of those buildings really don't have off-street parking, obviously. And so, it's just something to keep in the back of your mind as we go through this street skate process, you know, we might be wanting to remove some parking spaces, we just always have to keep in mind, you know, hopefully we get more businesses downtown, we want people to be able to park somewhat close, so we just wanna kinda keep that in mind, there's some residents that live downtown too, um, so just, it's a good problem to have, I just want everybody to be kinda thinking about that, so, okay? Okay, next is some IGA and identification agreements with Peetown Library District, Peetown Fire District, and Peetown Park District regarding the receipt of developer contributions and our attorney is going to translate all that.
Thanks, so just so everyone has an understanding of what we're doing here, the village has had in its village code for many years now, code provisions for what are called impact fees. And an impact fee, uh, essentially is if somebody's gonna be developing property, um, in the village with new residential housing, uh, the code says before the village is gonna sign your plat of subdivision so it can be recorded, that you have to show us or that you have paid, uh, certain fees to the library, park district, and fire protection district. And those fees are specified in the code and the reason for that is as we get new residential housing in the village, that that has an impact and so that's, that's where that name comes from, it has an impact on, on the park district because there's more people they need to serve, same for the library, same for the fire protection district. So it's a way for them to theoretically, um, acquire more property for park purposes if they need it, to do more programming, et cetera. The, the ways they can spend that money are specified in the ordinance. So this comes, the whole idea of this comes from state law and the important thing to understand is that villages do this pretty commonly, but they don't have to. And so, what we say is if we're gonna do this for you, library, park district, fire protection district, we want you to indemnify us and say that if somebody challenges you, if a developer files suit against you over these fees or for whatever reason related to this, that, that, you know, you're, you're, you're gonna take care of it and we're not going to be harmed by that. Um, and, and so that's what these agreements do and your ordinances actually say that there will be these agreements with these tax, with these other taxing bodies, uh, but when Amy was reviewing the records here, uh, she, she wasn't able to find signed copies of any of those and so we want to, uh, we went back to those three districts and, and worked with them on these agreements so that we have signed copies. In the event there's ever a problem, we're able to, to have this kind of dictate how, how things proceed.
Okay, questions?
Is there a certain percentage or is it just like a certain set price that they get, like a certain amount or is it a set percentage?
For, uh, the library, it's a set fee, I mean for the park, it's a set fee, for the fire district is a formula, it's based on a formula, and for the school, it's based on the type of unit and kind of the formula.
Yeah, sometimes it can be a pretty complicated formula, so when people enact these, there's really, they usually have consultants that figure everything out and that's put in there. So that's all in your code already, we're not adding that, these are just for the protection purposes.
So do we have one with the school or?
Yes.
We already have one with the school?
Yes.
Okay, so are we approving these all at once?
Yeah, you can approve all, all three at once.
Any other questions?
How about the village impact fees? Everything's a place for that. Does that, I mean, years ago, it was a little bit loosey-goosey, like, we like some parkway and we like some plants and fire department, and some villages would like to do these cars. It was all up for negotiation, is that kind of the way we were set up?
I mean, no, there's a, there's a set, it's a set, it's in the ordinance and it's set. We could negotiate additional with the developers.
So I mean, it's such an annexation agreement, you know, you can negotiate whatever you want with that.
That's where that comes in.
It's the same situation with a planned unit development, so sometimes big subdivisions will be planned unit developments, the zoning process and you can get village benefits as part of that process.
But there's a set fee for the village.
All right, there's no further questions, entertain a motion to approve a resolution which will be 20 R O six to approve intergovernmental agreements and indemnification agreements with the Peetown Library, Peetown Fire District, and Peetown Park District. So move.
Second.
Then moved by trustee Bowden, second by trustee Sluse.
Bowden?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Cam?
Yes.
Maravka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Okay, next is a, uh, resolution supporting submission of an application to the Illinois Department of Transportation for funding for the 2021, 20, 2020, 2021 ITES grant. So this, we've talked about this as a method to fund our long-awaited walkway path from Ratchee Road out to the McDonald's area, Oriole Drive. I know we've all been wanting to get this done for a long time, uh, there's been a couple of flies in the ointment that I want you to be aware of, um, I think, uh, if the path goes on the south side of the street, south side of Wilmington Road, there's gonna be additional expenses and obtaining easements from the existing businesses there. The other issue is how do we get people from the north side of Wilmington Road to the south side of Wilmington Road? And, uh, I think, you know, that's an issue.
You've got an exhibit, I, I gave you an exhibit at your place.
Yeah, so, um, you know, there was some talk about putting a path on the north side of the road because there's no easements required there, but then, you know, you're looking at having to cross at Oriole, which, you know, that's, I'm afraid to drive my car on Oriole and Wilmington Road, so I wouldn't want a nine-year-old kid to cross the street there. So, I don't know, so, um, staff, you know, Amy has suggested that possibly we put this off until we figure out a way to get people across the street, whether it's a stop sign, um, you know, even a walkway, like, you know, a, a crosswalk with, you know, flashing lights or something, but something we'd have to work with Wilmington, with Will County to do, so, anyway, um, it's up for discussion.
I think we continue to pursue it. I don't know how these pedestrian yield things, like when there's a pedestrian present, you gotta stop and not cross, but if there's not, then you just kinda go right through. Those seem to be pretty efficient crossings, but I don't know what kind of, uh, regulation was required, but, uh, you know, then it's not unnecessary stop sign, you know?
I recently saw the application and it was a busy four-lane coming up and people would walk up, there's a sensor that hit and then the lights would flash on the sides, but also in the pavement were yellow lights, yellow traffic, and they were flashing too. At night it was really impressive, but, uh, people don't have to stop until they're exactly there, they wouldn't stop.
Is the one on the south side even feasible?
No, I mean, not without buying a lot of right-of-way, which would be really expensive and that's not to say they'll even sell it to us.
So we're locked into the north side anyway, right?
Probably.
And we only have to figure out where do we wanna put the crosswalk?
Uh, that, i- i- if you wanna put a crosswalk there, I think we might be inviting, making it less safe, putting a sidewalk there than it is now, that, that is my thoughts, um, and opening ourselves up to liability if somebody gets hit by a car.
Oh, so you're suggesting no sidewalk?
Um, I, I'm suggesting that you wait until there's an actual street light because I don't think that traffic on Wilmington Peetown Road is going to stop with a crosswalk, I think they're only gonna stop with a stoplight.
Is there any way to build a tunnel?
Or, or an overpass.
Might be a buck bridge.
I'm not saying not a sidewalk, I'm saying I'm afraid after staff looked at this, that it's really scary to encourage children across Wilmington Peetown Road. And, and if the north side is, is the only option and we're gonna build a sidewalk and we're gonna basically encourage children across Wilmington Peetown Road, it, it makes me very afraid.
So how will we get a stoplight there?
Um, good question.
That seems like a Herculean task.
It does, and that's why I'm saying that maybe upon further.
We're good at one of your Donalds, I'm sure.
She, do you wanna make a comment at all?
Well, I was around when they were proposing bike paths and that's been a long time ago. And the problem that came up was how do you cross Wilmington Road? And safety-wise, there is no safety measure to walk across that road. At the time I had talked to Tom Logg and we sat down and discussed it and we said the only safe way is a bridge going over it that they have in some place because I wouldn't have anybody. If you put traffic control lights there, well, if the county ever expands the road, that takes that out and getting approval for traffic control lights from the county because that's their road, that's another project. So safety-wise, I think you're better off just kinda waiting to see what, uh, development of the 57th overpass and, and that grows in, because right now, I wouldn't have anybody walking across that road, I don't care what lights they have flashing because it's not, the traffic is too unsafe and we don't control the speed limit.
So Amy, you might have a answer to this, does putting, uh, a walkway over, you know, doing a bridge, pedestrian bridge, does that, would that be covered, like, did any of these grants that we would request or?
I don't know, I, I can look at that, um, I don't know, do you know Troy, if that's, if that's a covered expense in this?
Um, I, if it's for half-use, it might be, but I haven't looked at that specifically.
Okay.
But the other challenge might be getting Will County to allow that.
Yeah.
Which I've never asked them about anything like that.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can look at that.
Yeah.
I did talk to the Will County Forest Preserve because I wanted to find out if we were part of a, a bigger trail system because you can get points for that and Wilmington Peetown Road is in their bike pla, uh, bike trail, their bike plan. And so she was pretty excited when she called me back because Wilmington Peetown Road is their east-west, in their east-west plan. And, you know, we can kind of wait it out, one of their concerns is maybe Will County should kinda take that on because if they rebuild that road eventually, in their plan, they said that it should be pedestrian, something for pedestrians should be included if, when they widen that road, because, so my concern is too, if we put any kind of infrastructure in here and Will County comes in and widens this, they're gonna take out our infrastructure and they're not gonna be obligated to build it. Plus, if this is their road, they put in pedestrian sidewalks.
They're liable.
They're liable, not Peetown.
And I think even just, just having just one bridge crossing, I mean, that's a big area.
Yeah.
You're, you, you need at least three to get across.
Yeah, I mean, we've talked, we kind of talked about where would we put the crossing and, you know, people may not use it, they, we put the sidewalk in, they may decide to cross somewhere else and we're still liable, uh, if they get hit by a car or something, so.
What would Will County do?
That's kind of my thoughts. And, and what I can do is, oh, the Forest Preserve has, um, they have a, a meeting group and other communities are allowed to participate and what I can do is I can participate in that so that I can stay involved and I can maybe, you know, have Peetown's interests in mind on that committee so that maybe when this does at some point, you know, start to get developed or I just keep our interests at the forefront.
So, is there anything else we could apply for with this program?
You know, I wouldn't mind, you know, if there was something we could do with our railroad beds, that's their priority, is sidewalks and, and abandoned railroad beds. I, you know, I don't know if there's anything you wanna do with that since we already have it annexed and, um...
Use that as your crossing, the railroad road?
Uh, well, we still have to cross Wilmington Peetown Road.
So, there's a Wobanzik Trail over by Simmerton, I mean, it's the same road, the same traffic, they have a sign, nobody's gonna run over there and people use it, you know, I mean, I, I guess, my bigger concern is the, the liability of continuing to turn our heads and wait, it's just, that's my, my, my concern.
I mean, I would, uh, if we were gonna put a bridge over there, I think the logical place would be at the railroad bed because then you could, you know, if we have a new extent, that trail over there, you know, that would be the logical place to put it, but, so, um, I don't know, Amy, why don't you look into, uh, you know, what the feasibility is of, and the problem is with the right-of-way that we have, that railroad, it really doesn't lead anywhere.
Right.
Those grants wanted to be able to say you go from the school to the park or whatever or.
Um, I do, I also got an offer from, because I've been calling around, like Illinois Riders' Association, they're like the association in Illinois for, for bicycle riders and their goal is to have more trails in Illinois, so they're willing to come out and give us a consultation on kind of looking at our situation and giving us the best route and things like that, so I could have them come out and, and look at our situation and see what they think and.
But isn't this, this is tied, I mean, one of these grants do, this one's due next month, right?
Uh, we have told them, we can't remember.
Okay.
It just, it just opened up Friday.
Well, why don't you give us a little more information and, I mean, I, I don't, you know, we all want some kind of pathway there, um, obviously we want it to be safe for the community and, I mean, Troy, what, does the county plan to redo Wilmington Road soon? I mean, have you heard anything about that at all or?
They have widening it in their long-term plan, but it's just, you don't know if that's gonna happen or not, because they have it as a strategic regional arterial, that's why it's so hard to get the access if we wanna do business.
Right. And that's why it'd be hard to put a stop sign or stoplight there, right?
And we've been in meetings with Will County before, they won't put a stop sign on the road or treacherous, you know, unless it's warranted by traffic, um, you know, maybe warranted by safety for some sort of reason, but not likely based on the way they, they bend, a lot of that kind of stuff, we couldn't even get them to lower the speed limit, you know, so.
Well, could you, I mean, do you talk to them on a regular basis or maybe could, do you have tactics here, could you just tell them our problem and say, you know, what do you, what do you recommend?
When I brought the project up to them in the past to get their thoughts, they mentioned that they would probably require, you know, some sort of flashing beacon for a crossing, but just kind of with the thoughts of, kind of what we're talking about, you know, it still is not the safest crossing the road, like trucks come at 50 miles an hour even with a flashing light, so, um, that's what they, they won't really give you anything until they send the plans to, to actual, or you comment, that's just what I mentioned a little time.
Where are fucking at?
Yeah.
Crossing on Peetown Wilmington by Simmerton? You know, that's not for young kids, adults are always running, that's the collagrass bike path for Will County Forest Reserve, it runs from Manhattan all the way down to an ending by the river, going through backwoods, but that has that crossing notice only and of course, there are no kids on it unless they're accompanied by adults. It's really an adult path that people use for hiking and running and bicycling, and like I said, that's why Wilmington Road out that way is very remote, you're not gonna have the kid traffic that you could have with anything up here.
Are there comments? So, you're gonna look into, um, maybe getting this bike organization out here to see what they have to say.
Right.
And, uh, look into, uh, you know, even if a crossing would be covered, and maybe Troy, you gotta, if you talk to people out at Will County, just, I don't know, how long ago was that, you talked to them?
It was two years back.
So maybe ask them again, show them this picture and say, you know, what do you think? Okay?
So no, no, I know for sure that lights are not covered in this grant, so you, but you want me to see if, if a, like a, a bridge type structure is?
Right.
Okay.
And I guess, Troy, that's another question, say, hey, if we got a bridge across here, is that something you would approve?
Okay.
All right, um, anything else on that, Rodden? All right, discussion regarding solicitor's permit, so, uh, when this, uh, virus started back in March, uh, we temporarily suspended any solicitor's permit because we didn't want people knocking on doors, uh, and so right now we're, it's still suspended, um, and Amy just wanted to bring it up, uh, what's the desire of the board, do we wanna just keep it the way it is right now, do we wanna allow solicitors again, um, I was saying, somebody knocked on my door Sunday evening, you know, and I asked, do you have a solicitor's permit? He goes, oh, my boss takes care of that.
Good one.
Yeah, so, I mean, there's some people out there anyway, but, uh, what's the feeling of the board?
Keep it in place.
Keep it, keep it the way it is.
Is that included, are there just groups, they, they can still knock on your door even if we put a stop on all solicitation?
So, um, I don't, do we, was that a, did we pass an ordinance or we just said no, just directing it as a temporary basis, was there a date on it or?
No.
Well, why don't you put it in your tickled file to revisit this, uh, next spring maybe?
Okay. I mean, I could, maybe, we have a, a section on our website that says COVID-19, I could maybe put something in there that just like, this is information for people that they're checking.
Right.
I don't think his boss checked, but.
No, no, and I guess, for any residents listening tonight, I mean, so if somebody knocks on your door, uh, they don't have a permit, uh, and it's something, I don't, she, who would you, who would you have the residents call or just call the other one?
Out emergency number, the 3003, 258003.
I know Officer Popek did catch, um, he did catch one and I know that, you know, that the officers are checking.
I know they, they had a couple of calls over the weekend, some intermittent.
Yeah.
So, so they're, they're not checking, I don't think they're checking with the village, they're just kinda going out there, so I just wanted to bring it back and bring to you and see what your thoughts, if your thoughts were still the same. We do get, gotten a occasional calls with solicitors asking, but they must be getting restless and deciding to walk the road.
All right, um, everybody up for a tour of the municipal facility?
Yeah.
So can we, um, can we adjourn before we do that?
Uh, we would prefer to adjourn after the tour since we'll all be together and, uh...
Sure, okay.
Just bring up, yeah, just something to think about, I know it's, if you go in the stores, you're gonna see that Halloween candy everywhere, it's out. Come, the first meeting in October, we'll have to decide whether or not Halloween will be an event called it, you know? I know it's kind of, well, you say far away, but, you know, it's not far away, letting people know, but there's some.
Okay.
Discussion of that going around, whether or not Halloween should have face-to-face and people coming to doors. I know drivers look forward to it and all that, but that's something we have to monitor and like I said, in October, the first meeting, we'll discuss it and see what the.
Perfect.
Correct what the board is.
Are there any questions of the press at all? Uh, I don't see any, any, uh, other questions from you guys, any correspondence, questions of me or Amy, anything? Oh, yeah, so, did you forward this to everybody?
No, I just gave them a flyer.
So, I think we mentioned this before, we are looking into an adjudication system for our municipal, uh, any municipal violations, so, um, code enforcement, uh, parking, traffic tickets, uh, so it's a, it's a way municipalities have come up with to expedite those cases instead of going to, you know, Will County, um, and, uh, so, anyway, this just came in the mail today or emailed to Amy about, um, this is exactly what we were talking about, so if anybody would like to, uh, listen to this and kinda get an idea of what's involved, uh, talk to Amy and, you know, we can get you registered for that. I know, Bill, did you, did you go to something on this or is that coming up?
We had a meeting last Wednesday with Beecher, and it's almost a high group, and this Wednesday we're meeting in Beecher to have another vendor, uh, discuss.
Okay. But what we're trying to do is possibly combine with Beecher and maybe some other communities to, um, you know, save costs by, you know, pooling our resources together, so.
This is just an educational webinar, it's not a vendor, so it'll just give you kind of the basics of what education is and it's done by the Illinois City and County Managers Association, so it's just an hour webinar, you could do it from wherever you would like to be, you don't have to come here, uh, it's, it's very economical, so if you wanna register, just let me know and I'll put it on the village credit card.
Okay, so, um, our tour guide is ready, Bob and Bill, you're both gonna do the honors, uh, and I, I just want just to kind of, you know, just kind of ask questions away, you know, I never saw the whole complex until, you know, a few weeks ago, so I just thought it should be beneficial for everybody to kind of see exactly what we got here, so we'll come back and adjourn, okay?
Are you, Amy, are we showing in the basement?
Yeah, let's give him the whole cake and bowl.
Yeah.
Might as well start there and work.
Work our way up.
Work over here. He should come up, he should see it.
All right, follow.
Follow the team, you wanna, you wanna do this, you know, go on, all right, come on. Show me what we're working with.
No, I mean in the mask.
Yeah.
I'm seeing it.
I'm gonna go for a smoke.
Don't tell.
Why they go all the way back, but you guys, I got you.
I got you. Yeah?
There's one right there by the other hand. Maybe it's one out.
Alright, we'll look at that.
Up there, yeah.
Yes. Alright, we'll look at that.
Up there, yeah.
Yes. Just show them what's in your office.
That's gonna have a lot to do with that.
Yeah.
It's so pretty because I'm looking at where I was growing up. Because I'm looking like, why is there a picture of me in here? Like, I was seriously freaking out. And I showed my grandma, I go, Grandma, look at that picture of me. She goes, oh my gosh. She goes, that's mine itself, and that's my mom.
Wow.
So I was like, that's funny.
One more one there.
Now I remember where this is called Hope.
Yeah. Yeah, right up this way. Do that too.
We want to find her, probably. This one. Water.
Yeah, here it goes. Far and wide. That's where he's just sort of standing down. There's very. There's my. So, uh, 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 uh. General, there's like. There's all these. Yeah. I think it's there. Oh, they're all there. This is the hole where the guys. That's me.
(coughing)